...in my nation, under God, in this world, we are the people of justice for all.
Okay, recognition of visitors. Hearing other public.
Did we need to...
You see our Republic? Yep.
So, I'm Ed Dalton, President of Auxilio. And I know that this board meeting was brought together as an emergency meeting based on information that is out there on transportation. And so I'm here today to basically explain that under the RFP and the contractual obligations, which we have not formally signed, we will be prepared, we are prepared. And the reason I came today was because you're gonna hear one side, which is, there's a lot of rumors out there. You can see that we have forty-one buses out there, and they're in the process of being inspected. And in the process, there were some flaws that were found that were fixed. Yesterday, I received a call when I was in northern Michigan that said that we would not be... We would not be prepared. And I have spoken with the top state inspectors, which we have a very good relationship with these people. We run buses in three states, so we make sure that we're on par. And our attorney happened to be on the phone with me when the head state inspector called me about five twenty-five last night. And he said he spoke with the lead inspector here, and they said that the plan that's in place is a very good plan, and it's a plan that they understand. What was discovered yesterday, and we didn't know about it, and it's a very small little blurb in the state requirements, is that every seat has to have a fire retardant liner on the bottom. It was expressed to the district that those seats would not be ready in time. In actuality, we were able to get the material, it is on the road today, it will be here before noon, actually about ten thirty. But we're not gonna start people till this afternoon because of the high heat today. We will work till nine or ten o'clock tonight, when it's a little bit cooler, to make sure that they're done. We have inspections again. Jim Craver is our operations director here, he's on the ground every, just about every day here. He can give you more of an update, but they've formed a twelve-person process, or twelve-person committee to address the issues that they found. What I was informed yesterday, and which is very strange, because they approved six buses, then they approved eight buses, and then all of a sudden, there was this problem, which we've acknowledged and we're taking care of. But they did not red-tag, as I call it, the buses, they just took them out of service. And they said, as soon as you get them on, we take that out-of-service tag off of there. So those will be... We have fourteen buses that are fully inspected, we have six buses that are still running because those six buses did have the fire retardant material on the seats. In addition to that, we have everything that's supposed to be here installed, the radios, the GPSs, and all the cameras will be in by next week. Everything will be done a week before school starts, or by Friday, because we will test the cameras. In addition, we have mechanics on-site here. We've brought them in from outside, because the mechanics here, we decided to, it wasn't gonna work for us, the ones... I believe we made an offer to a mechanic yesterday, who will be local, who is a young man. And we have four managers that will be on-site here through the next week, from other locations, making sure everybody's trained properly, and that the communication is proper. We knew that we would have some issues, because buses and the head of the state inspection literally said this to us last night on the phone, said, "We had a meeting with all the vendors out there. They don't expect buses to return to normal until 2024," meaning the process of ordering and getting them on time. With that said, we have forty-one buses sitting here, and those forty-one buses will be ready to go before the fifteenth of August. And the fifteenth is the first day that we run charters. Currently, we are running field trips for you. We have six buses that are approved and are running field trips for you. So we will continue the process, and we will get this done. We have done this before, this has been more challenging because of the supply chain. Somebody asked me, "How are we getting this material?" We have three hundred and fifty of the underneath material, the fire retardant material, that has been pre-cut and ready to go as soon as it gets here. We have three hundred and sixty full seat covers with that, the underneath piece, that we can either cut up and use it to put on the bottom of the seats, or if we need to replace the whole seats. When we went through this with, and I say "we," and I'm talking about our people, went through the process with the, with our mechanics and our people, they counted that they needed about seven hundred underneath material. It's a little over seven hundred, there are some buses that are full, that have the seat covering underneath it, there are some seats that are fully covered on individual, there are some seats that we got yesterday that the seat backs aren't to our standards, so we will replace the whole seat cover. We also have cushions. There was one other issue, and that is on the Bluebird, you have two types of buses here. One bus is called an International, or IC, the other is the Bluebird. Internationals are all set. All those buses will pass immediately tomorrow. They have, all but two have been inspected, and they all meet the...
How many, you said?
That's, is it nineteen, Jim, of the Internationals?
There's nineteen International.
Okay. Not a problem, ask questions. We have fifteen or sixteen buses that need a, what's called a red light switch, which is really something that is only done in Ohio, where the driver has a switch, and he can flip the red light, and flip the switch, and the overhead red lights, and the stop arm extends, meaning that all traffic has to stop. The door does not open. Typically, when that stop arm goes out, the door then opens and so forth. The reason that that is in the state of Ohio is in case there's an emergency and they have to stop, but they don't want the door open, so they can stop traffic. So that is a switch that our mechanics will start putting in over the weekend. We had to order all those fifteen, I think we ordered like twenty-some, just to make sure that we had enough in case there were any problems. Those, they have spoken to the state inspector, will be inspected on Tuesday of next week. And they have looked at every one of our buses, and they have told us where, or if there is a problem with any issues on those buses. One of the things that I was very proud of, that these, one of the inspectors came to, I believe, Jim, I don't wanna put words, but he basically said, "These are really nice buses," compared to what he's been dealing with, "The school district and the kids will enjoy using those buses." So at the end of the day, we will get across that finish line. I know that you're hearing other things, and I know that there's all kinds of people out there saying that you're not gonna do it. Our people are top-notch. Our mechanics, I got a call from one of the inspectors, and he said, "I have never dealt with such a kind and thorough mechanic," and that is our lead mechanic, who was down here since last Sunday, he left yesterday. That makes me feel good. That's what this company's about. But there have been problems, there have been issues, there have been a lot of rumors. You have an opportunity to say, "Yes, we wanna buy thirty buses, and we wanna run our seven." An update, we wanted to know how many bus drivers we have. We have twenty-seven bus drivers that are, have been screened and so forth. Of those twenty-seven, I was on the phone when you came out, and we have, we have twenty-one of their full screenings, and their background checks, and their DOT drugs, and their DOT physicals completed, and back to us. So there's twenty-one that we have the information on. There were some more envelopes that came in yesterday, but our HR directors were out, they were up in Michigan doing some work, we had some meetings up there. And so that will be updated later on today. So my expectation is we're somewhere between twenty-three and twenty-five. We have, Jim, four in the queue, how many do we have that are being trained?
We have two being trained, and we have four in the queue that are fully licensed drivers with all the endorsements.
Okay. And so those people haven't been hired on yet. We have seven drivers coming from, five from Indiana, and two from Michigan, or did I get that backwards?
No, I think that's right.
No, I think I did that backwards. I think five from Michigan and two from Indiana, that are finishing their classes this week in Cincinnati, and they will be fully licensed. They are fully screened, have all the, have gotten all those things. They will be here for the first two to three weeks, to make sure that we have enough drivers, backup drivers, and so forth. So we've added, so if you add that, we will have at least thirty-two drivers, we have four in the queue, and one that's training that should be ready to go somewhere after the first week or second week of school. Is that correct?
At the end of August.
Yeah. So with all that, we should be through the end of August and into the first week of September, somewhere around thirty-five to thirty-seven drivers that we will have that can drive school buses here. And our expectation is that once we get up and running, that we will have more drivers coming over, because they will see. Now, the only thing we don't, we haven't been able to do, is we don't have the routes. And I will tell you that every district around here has already picked, their drivers have already picked the routes. Our drivers are getting a little anxious, and we keep saying, "It's coming, we'll give those to you." But it is a little bit of a concern, because the drivers wanna get out, and they wanna drive, and whether it's in a bus or a car, they like to get out, and they like to see what their routes are. And we pay them for it, whether it's in a bus or a car, and they like to drive it at specific times. And the reason they'll take a car a lot of times is when they'll do it early in the morning, or late in the afternoon, and they don't wanna block up traffic with the bus, but they'll get out in the car, and they'll do it, and they'll see where the stops are and so forth. That way, they can pull over and make notes, and then the bus is not a distraction for other traffic. So that is, that's unique to us, that we allow people to do that, that a lot of other companies don't do that. So that's why we want the routes as quick as possible, so we can do it. I can be long-winded, I'm passionate about this, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about the misinformation, I'm sorry about the missteps. I went and got the best buses that I could, and I knew that we would have challenges. And everybody has challenges today. But there is, you can call our bus company, and they will say, "There's nobody that's got a better reputation." There's nobody that could have picked up the phone and called Midwest Transit and said, "Hey, we got a problem." In less than an hour, they had all the materials for us to fix these seat bottoms. I didn't have to spend twenty phone calls, those people did it for me. They got it, and it's here, and it's on its way. It's not here right now, but there is a truck coming with all kinds of supplies. Our supplier of Bluebird here, our supplier of International here, who would have loved to supply the buses to us, are backing us up. They've had mechanics here, they have made sure our titles are in proper working shape, because we had to bring the titles over from another state, they had to be inspected, the bins had to be verified, then we had to take them to the county clerks, and we had to pay tax, which, can I borrow some money? No, I'm just kidding. So we had to pay the taxes on it. Jim, all the titles are done now, except three buses that are not here. So those three buses are, they had some issues. One is a lift bus, and when they did their final inspection, the one of the lift, one that holds the lift up, it's kinda like an air shock, it blew. So they're replacing that, and then as soon as that's done. And then there's another bus that it had a rear-end issue, and so they didn't wanna send it down to make us have to fix it down here. So those are two buses, but we have forty-one buses. I believe bar, we're gonna have thirty routes, is that correct, or?
We're looking, trying to keep it under thirty, correct.
Okay. But if it's more than thirty, we will, we will have people run. Our plan on the first day of school is to have what we call two sweeper buses. And you're saying, "What are sweeper buses?" Those are for, they run out, and there's a student standing on the corner of Twenty-first and, you know, Oberlin or something, I don't know if I made the right reference there. But, and dispatch will say, "Okay," and they'll call it a bus number, or they'll call it a blue bus, or green bus, or something, "Please go to Twenty-first and Oberlin and pick this student up." They may have gotten out there late, they may not even be on a bus list, or something like that. But for about the first week, we will run sweeper buses, just to make sure kids get picked up, and parents aren't having heart palpitations, that they, their kid is not getting to school. I am going to address something that has come to us, and I apologize if I'm overstepping. But we have started to get some calls, and there have been people stopping out there when our people are out there. And they say, "We love the buses, this is great, Lorraine City Schools." There have been parents that have approached us and said, "My kid is not on a bus, my kid is eight years old, and they're in the walk zone, and I can't let them walk that far," and so forth. So I'm addressing this, and I apologize again if I'm overstepping, but Dr. Graham, you told me that this is a tough, tough city, and these students need to get to school, and transportation, a lot of times, is their only method for getting there. So all I'm saying is, if you want us to pick these kids up, we will pick them up. And these parents that are concerned, that are, you know, inside that two-mile walk zone, we will be happy to address that and help you with that.
And typically, we don't interrupt, but I mean, I need to, because I know that we're recording this, there are laws that dictate what we do. So if we pick up a child a mile and a half in, because that child has, for whatever reason, they're on calls, that means we have to change our two-mile zone to one and a half miles for every student to do it, whether they attend to the Lorraine City Schools or any charter or any non-pub. So that's not enough for the beginning.
Okay, so I apologize, but I was just letting you know what people are stopping out there and saying, which I'm very sorry, I didn't mean to overstep. And so, and then, that's it. I will say one more thing to you guys. I just feel like we're working two opposite ends, and I'd really like us to work together. And that's, I addressed it last time, and it's called communication, and we should be on the same team, not on two different teams. And if you hear something or see something that's wrong with a bus, or you feel something's not being done right, call us. Talk to Jim, talk to Rhianne, talk to Junior, they're on-site, talk to our mechanics, they're on-site. We'll be happy to address it right away, and get it, try and get it taken care of. So with that said, here's one other thing, and we are more than happy to do this, at our expense, if you give us the approval, we will be happy to pick up the kids. And again, at our expense, that can't make it in, we have a list of students for band camp, they can't make it in, we just need your approval. Our buses are running in the morning, we'll be happy to go pick those students up, and bring them in, and then take them home, again, at no cost to you guys. So at the end, you just come back and let us know if you want us to do that. All right. I'm sorry, I was long-winded, very long-winded.
Informative.
Okay. But if there's any questions, I don't know if they're allowed to ask any questions.
It's a board meeting.
Yeah, I have a couple questions. So the forty-one buses that are out there in the lot, those are the ones that belong to us, those are Lorraine Cities, those will be, they're staying with us.
That's right. The majority of them already have Lorraine City Schools, there's a couple that we, they ran short on lately.
In order to repair those seat covers, do the buses, do the seats have to come off the buses to be repaired? Or you guys are just going under there and staple them up, or how do they?
No, the bench seats on the bottom seats, they flip up, there's a hinge on them, but you have to take the hinge off, and then they flip, you put the cover on them, just staple them. Yeah. And it all has to be, it has to be a certain number of covering underneath, and many of them have the material, there's just not enough covering when you flip the seats up. So we have to...
And of the three hundred and sixty full covers that you have coming, how many seats are there on a bus?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
That's twenty-four on a seventy-two passenger bus. And, Mr. Ballard, let me explain, that there were some seats that already had the covering on, under. So forty-one buses, and of those forty-one, one of them, they, what we call a mini bus, those are, that doesn't count, that one doesn't count, it has different seats, and it's totally meets the specifications. There were six buses, times twenty-four, that's roughly a hundred and forty-four seats that were okay. And then there's, like I said, sporadic seats in there that people, if they replace the coverage, or on Bluebirds, it's really strange, but the first force, two seats on each side, have the covering all the way underneath, we don't know why, but it does. And so that eliminates some of those seats.
And those are the only findings on those buses that we're waiting on to be approved?
On the, yes, on the, and the, as I stated, the red light switch on some of the Bluebirds need to be added, and that'll be added on Sunday and Monday.
And do you guys have any other contracts here in the state of Ohio?
Yeah. So we've had some Toledo buses over here, we actually just got another contract in Toledo, they wanted us to perform before school, but they now pushed it out to...
But the same issues with the retardant underneath and the red light was for those buses, that's another part, are they Lorraine County specific?
Uh, no, it, I'm sorry, bud.
I'm sorry, I looked at him and brought him into conversation, apologies.
So it was Lorraine County because of the number of buses that we needed to buy. All the other previous Ohio buses were bought through the international dealer in, out of Columbus and Cincinnati. So we did not have that issue that occurred. But I can tell you that our first buses in Cincinnati all failed. And they came from the international dealer in Columbus. And why did they fail? Because it didn't have the tailpipe that went all the way out to the end, it went out the side. And Ohio requires a cup that goes over and forces that exhaust down, none of them had it, and they all failed. That wasn't our fault, and this was an Ohio dealer that delivered them that way. We fixed them, and they passed the next day, and we were fine. But bringing buses from other states creates challenges. Bringing buses from Missouri, which has a very similar set of specifications to Ohio, made a lot of the Internationals easier to get here. I mean, here's another issue. First aid kits, they're totally different in Ohio than in eighty percent of the states. Right now, this company's got eighty-eight first aid kits on order from all different vendors, we have twenty-four coming in on a truck today, and we have, we have another forty coming in next week to our warehouse in Cincinnati. And oh, by the way, we have, I wanna say forty Star Seats, do you know what Star Seats are?
No.
Okay, Star Seats are for the younger child, that buckle them in, and when they go in, so we have a whole pallet of them, sitting in our warehouse, ready to be brought up here for your buses. So we have Star Seats and the restraints that we purchased, per the specifications and the conversations with you guys. So they literally dropped the pallet in our, so if anybody feels strong enough to lift that up, no, I'm just kidding.
And this may be an eternal question for us, but early in your conversation, you emphasized of the contract not being signed at this point, are we in between, we have an RFP that's been approved, but...
I am, we're getting to it.
Where are we at in that? That's something we'll get to in our own place. Okay, very good.
Yeah. The lawyers have just been dotting the i's and crossing the u's.
And that was the only concern, was it our side or your side? We'll get there.
Well, we are running buses for you right now. Jim, how many trips a day do we take for you?
There's two on Monday, two yesterday, and I think there's three going out today. I don't know, I have to look at the schedule.
Okay. So we continue, and our drivers want us to continue to drive.
Tony, Scott, that's a little...
I wanted to ask a clarifying question. Mr. Ballard asked, are these our buses? So just to clarify, they are not our buses, they are your buses that we are using.
I would just want to make sure that we didn't just go and gather the buses to fill up the lot, to say, "Look, we got a bunch of buses," and there really weren't a lot of them that are running here assigned to us.
Got you, I just, for like, public purposes, I just wanted to clarify that they don't belong to us, that they are your buses.
They're our buses, so let me put a clarification in, Tony, if I ever step, jump up, smack me in the head, whatever you wanna do.
Please don't do that, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm a non-binary person, so. The buses are ours, they are designated for Lorraine City Schools. In the contract, if we fail, you have the right to purchase these buses, you have a window that you are allowed to run these buses at like a, and I don't know what the full verbiage is, but in a minute... like a, and I don't know what the full verbiage is, but at, at a minimal cost to, to you. And then you have the right to purchase these buses if we fail to perform the contract. So, you don't have to go, "Oh, my God, they failed, and we got to go run and find twenty-five, thirty, forty buses." No. The, you have the right to, I, I won't say take them over, but kind of take them over. So.
Thank you.
Did I do wrong there?
No.
So, was there anything else? Wait. I, I, I'm just going to say, we, we don't fail. We, we get there. Our promise is to be running on that first day of school. And rumors are not rumors, we will have everybody on site to make sure that these buses are up and running. You can run and, and, and go. We have been going since the end of June, hiring people, getting all the specifications, financing these buses on down the line. It's not, you snap your fingers and buses and people appear. Every day, I'm driving down, and I'm listening to the Bloomberg report from Michigan, and in the middle of the report, it says, "Currently, the United States is, is short over a million drivers, whether it's truck drivers, uh, cab drivers, um, bus drivers, train drivers. A million drivers short, and we're going to have enough people for you." And I don't know a lot of companies, which we faced, and your old company continues to try and hold people. Uh, even though we, we've offered more money, we haven't raised a single, uh, price of, of our route rates, but we have raised our rates where we started, Jim, at twenty-one, and now we're, we're guaranteeing twenty-four dollars an hour.
That's six, five to six hours of that.
Yeah. So, again, I, I, I'm sorry. I know I'm long-winded. I know I'm passionate about this, and I believe that, that we will get this across to finish line. I know that we will. I made a commitment that I would be here, and I've been here ever since. I've been here every week, making sure Jim doesn't leave this place. I don't know if he knows what his wife looks like, but he spends a lot of time here, and, uh, that's a question you can ask him. All right. Is there, are there any questions? Otherwise, we're going to exit, so you can.
Yeah, I've got the time constraint, so I've got deposition at ten o'clock.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What'd you do now? Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Just film going into the closing session.
Need a motion to, uh.
Motion, uh, accept the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the order.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
All right. You were shut down.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes. Okay, we're now gonna, you want to read the motion, please?
The recommendation?
Recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Education, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to enter into an agreement with ABC Transit and that should be two-point-four million dollars for buses.
In vain.
In vain.
Got a motion?
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Okay, the next board meeting's going to be on the eighth at five o'clock and, uh, eight o'clock.
I said, "We're the fifth at eight o'clock."
Okay, and, uh, direct to each, uh, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support. Roll call.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Zaria.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
And I would like to thank everybody before recording stops for all your, for your flexibility and dropping everything to make this meeting happen. So thank you very much.